We have how many?
Two, four, six, eight.
Nine. And start. Day three of the first regular session of the 21st Congress will now come to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Roll call, Chief Clerk.
Senator Oritos. Senator Figuerre. Senator Koolen. Lili Dharber. Senator Conman. Senator Neth. Senator Perman. Senator Romolo. Senator Orsmal. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina. I'm sorry, five speaker Moses. Mr. Speaker, ten members have present.
We have formed the transact business this morning. For Lili Dharber, reading of the journal.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to you, all honorable members, staff, and all those who are observing our session this morning. I again move to dispense with the reading of the journal.
It's moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the journal. Those in favor of that motion say yes. Boss no, motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the journal. Next item.
Item five, Mr. Speaker, we received a presidential communications numbers 20-452
Assign those, Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next.
Item seven, member communications, also none. Item eight, departmental communications, none. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, also none. Item 10, state communications, none. Item 11, state Supreme Court communications, also none. Item 12, municipal or town communications, none. And item 13, foreign government communications, also none.
Okay, order of the day.
Point of privilege, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, state your point, Chairman Koolen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I would like to request the intelligence of our Congress to please recognize our own constituents and also they are part of the, member of the national government. Let me say their names. These are my constituents. Roger S. Maury is a deputy CM of the mission of Japan. Let me give him a round of applause. And this guy maybe apply some kind of what traditional way or...
His conscience once he forgot his name.
And four were all about him.
I guess both of them forgot.
Congress back in session, Chairman Koolen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. My apology to the, our constituents that I was really inspiring of his name, but, Mr. Speaker, our general counsel, counsel general in Portland was observing our session this morning, named Joe Ennett. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Koolen, a very easy name to, not to forget, but, well, then you said he played magic on you, okay? All right, there was a point of information that was raised by Chairman Orsmal during recess, and I want to direct, for the record, our staff to make all appropriate corrections, if that's necessary, okay? We're on standing committee reports. Any chief clerk?
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, next item is special committee report, Chairman Perman.
Thank you, Speaker, good morning to you, five's floor, members, staffs, and all that are observing from the gallery. So move with its adoption, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, there is a special committee report from the Committee to Wait on the President, number 21-01. It's been distributed to members. So it's been moved and seconded that it be adopted. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. Discussion on the report.
Speaker.
Chairman Perman.
Thank you, Speaker, while I go through the report, just summarize it and asking the, the members of that committee to also help out if I can miss out some of the needed information. Mr. Speaker, basically, on our last special session, that was two weeks, two weeks ago plus last week, we, the same, those bills that we acted on, it's okay, but the bills that we didn't act on, they're gonna resubmit all of those again. And what you're looking at, the 700,000 is the leftover from the projection of the $6.3 million or $6.4 that was given to us on our last special session. The, the kind of bills that will be resubmitted is the one for the FSM Petro, the, the solar energy, or the, the, also the Wiji to be part of that. The, the Pacific region, so our students can get the, get some kind of benefit from it. And plus, to widen the, the Secretary of Education's duties regarding any schools or institution that wants to come, come into FSM and do, for example, the, they, they wanted to address the Tokyo Medical School for that one too. And actually, this is, it's a small one because they're just resubmitting, we look at the agenda, it's the same agenda as the eight, our last special session. So they're just resubmitting, and lastly, but not least, it's a new one that is actually all the, they wanted to tackle the ADP debts that we, the entire FSMs, and according to them, on that day, we have about $51 million that we owe to Asian Development Bank. But then, and if other members can add on what I just said, please do. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Perman, any of the committee, Chairman Wally, I mean, yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, I think that's basically what the content of the committee to wait on the presidency report. If you look at the last committee to wait on the presidency report, it's almost similar to that because there is no changes, except the ADP matters here. I want to thank the good senator for his support. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Wally, for the additional info. Chairman Figuere. Okay, there is no further discussion.
Speaker.
Okay, Chairman Orsmal first.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I am trying to understand, on page two of the report, the top paragraph that started with the previous page, the last, second, I mean, the second to the last sentence and the last sentence relating to 700,000. The chairman indicated that this is an unappropriated amount, or, but what I'm reading here says, summary stated that the revenue available for appropriation as of today was slightly less than 700. Although the department and its base and upward revision, only this lower number is available. So all we have now is this 700,000 that is not yet earmarked for anything, or is there a reduction in the revenue by 700,000, or, you know, second, English is my second language, so may I be enlightened as to what these two sentences mean?
Thank you, Chairman Orsmal, Chairman Perman, would you like to...
Can I yield the floor to Chairman of Money?
Chairman Figuere, care to help out our colleague?
Well, I'm appalled, surprised, we just appropriated almost to the last penny, and I don't think there has been any changes in the revenue forecast, so I think that figure is correct for now. If there's any other money coming, it will be done later on, but I think that figure is around the neighborhood, should be corrected.
Speaker.
Chairman Perman.
Yeah, just to add on to that, I remember on our last special session, we, there was, I guess I could say rumor going around that there are money coming down from Amari, and that was also raised for, it's about 80 billion yen, not 80 million yen, so when they calculated, but Secretary of Finance advised the workers that there are some technical, needed technical corrections on those before they, somebody saw, president have told us that he will be looking into it as soon as possible and try to send it up to our, to look at this, this regular session. Thank you.
Are those technical corrections having to do with the number of zeros, or?
Speaker.
No, Mr. Speaker, it's actually the way the money was, came down, I guess, but, like I said, she, she advised her workers that she'll be giving us the exact amount and when it's ready to be act on. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Perman, for the clarifications. Chairman of Figuere, you have some information?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify the record, there is no 80 million dollars or 80 million yen coming in the near future. So I, I don't want that to be on record and people rely on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Figuere, so basically the fact is there is no such money as of today.
It's only alternative facts.
Okay, it's an alternative fact. Speaker. Chairman Orsmal, I know you have some...
Yeah, I, I think somebody is really playing magic in this chamber. I, I still don't understand, that 700 is the only amount left that is not appropriated, or the 700 is the revenue, projected revenue submitted was 700,000 more than what is available, or what, what is that 700 relating to?
I believe it refers to the amount or balance of unappropriated funds.
That is correct.
The general fund.
That is correct.
After our last supplemental appropriation. I think that's what it means.
That is correct, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, I wish the Americans who draft this report would put their head, or their English in my head, so they make it simple so I can understand straight out, not go around the bush and then give us information. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I thank the chairman for the responses to my queries. Thank you.
Thank you, but that's a legitimate concern, question you raised, okay? Any other discussion, any further discussion?
Speaker.
For Lili, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, actually, I don't have any question relative to the content of the report, but I'm just wondering whether the committee asked the newly elected president whether is fully aware of those latest bill that the outgoing president signed into law.
Chairman Perman?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, yes, the short answer to that question is yes.
You should be aware, he was member of Congress when we pass all these measures. You should be aware, he was member of Congress when we passed all these measures.
So I hope things will be implemented soon.
Okay, that's, I guess that's one, I know, assignments we gave him, to make sure that all these laws are implemented quickly and properly. Okay, any other discussion on the report?
I promise I wouldn't be prolonging sessions in the future, but during the reorganization on Saturday, I indicated the need for, I think it was during that session, rework, the need for timely scheduling and of our vessels. I just wondered if the committee further raised that issue with the President and the Vice President, so that I can start booking cargoes and passengers for whatever ship that may be heading down to Yap.
Well, Chairman Berman, did you, gentlemen, discuss with the President?
I think, well, we didn't.
Ship scheduling?
We didn't ask that because there was a given schedule of the ship. I don't know, I received mine on when it's leaving down to the southern islands and Bombay to Kuchai. So I received a schedule of that coming from TCNI Louis. So I did get a schedule, so we didn't even raise that on, because there's already been a schedule made.
I believe that's the only consistent scheduling, the one going down to the southern islands of Bombay. And the schedules for Yap and Truk, they're all over the place. It's up to Chairman Orsimal and Chairman Romolo and Chairman Kulen and Floridita Harper. Okay, any further discussion on that report? If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of Special Committee Report Number 21-01, say yes. A vote no, motion carried, said report is adopted by Congress. Next report, I mean, next item.
Point of privilege.
I stage your point, Chairman Berman.
Thank you, Speaker. I guess I'm gonna be the one doing this for the rest of the two years that we have on behalf of Chairman Panuelo, so thank you for giving me that privilege. I rise on a point of privilege to recognize, so in that is traditional title, Mr. Joseph Road from Kichi that observing our session this morning. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Berman. So you're now the chairman of the Bombay delegation? I haven't approved that, I will review it and.
Speaker, I didn't say I'm the chairman of the, I said it was given to me what Panuelo, Chairman Panuelo is doing.
Okay.
We will decide soon.
Sure, all right. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Item 16, Assignment of Measures and Communications. We have a referral sheet number 21-01.
Okay, take a look at that, Chairman and members, for your planning purposes. Next item.
Item 17, Unfinished Business. None, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, Bill Calendar, first bill.
Item 18, Bill Calendar, there are none.
Item 19, Resolution Calendar, first resolution.
None, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 20, Introduction of Bills and Resolutions.
Okay, if you have any measure to introduce, pass them on to Chief Clerk. Okay, next item.
Item 21, Miscellaneous Communications. There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item, Miscellaneous Business.
Item 22, Miscellaneous Business.
Do you have any miscellaneous business? Vice Speaker? Anybody with miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Orsimal?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. As I look around, I noticed that the chairman of the Committee on Money is not in the chamber, or at least not in his chair. I therefore wish to advance a request, a plea for the good chairman to be the chairman of the Yap delegation, subject to his final rejection of the offer or the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Orsimal. You know, you should wait when he's present, so you can make that statement to him.
Speaker, he's most, most senior than me, so I kinda, you know, do approach him. But we will provide the name of the chairman to you and Chief Clerk, but I've been asking him all along, since January 2019, if he can be chairing the delegation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Orsimal. I'm surprised because for all the three other delegations, they're actually fighting over who should be the chairman of the, while you are pushing it away from you, so that's something to be, you know, amazed.
But that should be a good indication of how we are in Yap.
I, I'm sure it is, yes, thank you. But yeah, we will, I will make those announcements. First, during miscellaneous business, I'll ask members to sign up with Chief Clerk on the self-standing committees. As for the special committee, I will be making the appointment once the resolution is in place. And same goes with the delegation chairmanship. I urge the delegations to come up quickly with their chairman, so we can make the proper announcements.
But Speaker.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much. If I may continue on a more serious note, I wish to indicate here that the, the absence of any representatives from the state of Yap, especially representing the state leadership, is not, is no indication of the delegation disregard or to make sure that we have our leaders participate in the opening of this Congress, the 21st Congress. We had mistakenly assumed that the invitations to the state leaderships would be going out from your office, Mr. Speaker. And if there is such, then I apologize to that staff. But unfortunately, we were requested Tuesday afternoon, the last Tuesday afternoon, to invite at least the governor and the speaker, but that time it was already very close to not being able to do anything. The process of getting them, or some of our leaders, to attend the opening of the 21st Congress would have been late with the flights out of Yap Tuesday night or early Wednesday, and that would be the last flight before the convening of this, the first day of this Congress. We had indicated to our leaders when we had meetings with them, the schedule of the session May 11, as is by law, and we were not approached to help in whatever way that we could. So we thought that maybe they had already received invitation from you or our people. And I just wish to note here that I'm sure if they were given the chance, they would have been here to share in the appreciation and congratulatory remarks and indication to the new leadership of this nation. I also hope, wish for the record to reflect that Yap, and especially our people are, as I indicated on opening day, are there, and I'm sure I speak on their behalf, that they're more than willing to help with this building of this young nation. Well, it's 40 years old, 40 years old, so no longer young. And I will be not honest with myself and with you members and you speaker, if I don't say that I will be watching with keen eyes and ears on how we operate from here to, at least during the four years that I am occupying this seat. So with that, I again advance our regret to our leadership that they had missed out on the opening day. And we will make sure that appropriate information are provided to them if there is going to be a formal inauguration of the new Congress and the new leadership of the executive branch. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Orsimal. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Back in session, we're still on miscellaneous business. So remember, submit your names to the committees in which you're interested, and of course, members of delegations, select your delegation chairman and let us know. Okay? Any further miscellaneous business? Yes.
Can I make an announcement during this miscellaneous? If I could ask?
It's up to you, it's up to you. That's why it's called miscellaneous.
If I could ask our delegation to meet right after the session, so we will try to split who's gonna be on what committee and all that.
Okay, especially Truk, you're too big, you need to figure things out.
May I also move on a short recess, again?
Okay, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Wally, you have miscellaneous?
Short recess, please.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Chairman Wally?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In anticipating that we'll have recess on Thursday, your EXF committee will start its budget hearing ten o'clock in the hearing room Thursday morning with all the offices overseas. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Wally. I think we should give deference on our, a lot of times, especially the chairman of the committees, for him to do his hearings with the overseas missions, which are here in, on island.
Speaker, I again move on a short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Chairman Net?
Thank you, Speaker. I just want to echo your instruction on members urging members to sign up for the committee, so we can get organization moving.
Thank you, Chairman Net, so members, remember. Chairman Berman?
Thank you, Speaker. I was hoping that Chairman of he will wait for me, because usually, education and health used to be married before, and now they're separated, for his time, because education, health will be needing his time too. Anyways, until I see the list who's gonna be on our committee, then I can, from then, I can actually start doing the oversight here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Berman. Chairman Figuerre, we're on announcement? If you have any announcement?
No, I don't have any announcement. However, I would encourage the delegations to submit who's gonna be serving on the Ways and Means Committee as soon as possible. Thank you.
Don't worry, Chairman Figuerre, you're the easiest committee, yours is the easiest committee. It's clear who's gonna be a member on your committee, okay? Chairman Kulen?
No announcement, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Coleman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, no announcement.
Chairman Ursimal?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Your committee on education, barring any cancellation of your airline, United, will start its meeting with budget hearing on Monday at one o'clock in the afternoon. And I hope by ten, by tomorrow, we will have members of the committee designated and time allocated and all of that. So Monday at one o'clock, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Ursimal.
With the College, with the College of Micronesia of S.A.
Take note, those who will be members on education. Vice Speaker, you have any announcement? None? Okay, let me again remind members, please, it's urgent, because it is a budget session, sign up with Chief Clerk or as indicated by Floridar, meet among yourselves, so you can decide who will be members on their respective committees. And I think Chairman Figuerre was absent when I announced that we will have a short get-together to plan out our activities for the rest of the session. Okay? Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Floridar, you have any announcement in your usual motion?
There is no announcement, Mr. Speaker, but I move that we stand in recess until ten AM tomorrow.
It's moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at ten in the morning. Those in favor say yes, a voice no. Motion carried, Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at ten in the morning.